All right, folks, it's 7:00. And if you will put your attention this direction, there was a public hearing scheduled prior to the commission officially opening for comments specifically related to the planning commission amendment request. So I'll read this to you. On February the 28th, 2023, the Bedford County Regional Planning Commission voted unanimously to give a favorable recommendation for the amendment of the zoning resolution of Bedford County, specifically Article 2, Section 2.120 A and B, flag lot and flag shaped lots, along with their respective definitions found in Article 7, Section 7.020. So this public hearing is specifically related to this matter. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? If you are, if you raise your hand, we'll recognize you and bring you to the lectern. Okay, I don't see anyone or hear anyone regarding this matter. So we'll declare the public hearing closed. And if you'll stand, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Mark Thomas as we open the meeting.
Let us pray. Our most gracious and kind heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day. Father, we just ask that you go with us, lead us and guide us and direct us in everything we do. Father, foremost, we want to give honor and thanks to your son, Jesus, who paid the debt on all of our sin. Father, I want to thank you for the military that has protected the very freedom that
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
we enjoy in this country.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Father, I ask that you go with all public safety across this country and protect them
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Mr. Yaki.
and their families, our teachers, everyone who serves in a public view.
Here.
Eighteen present, zero absent.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 14th,
Father, watch over them and protect them.
2023 commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All these things I ask.
All right, motion second, open for discussion or comments.
Christ name up, pray. Amen.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hearing none, all in favor? The meeting will now officially be opened by Sheriff Austin Swin.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is a notice for May of 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Okay. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Next item, nothing under presentations, so we'll go to resolutions. First resolution for consideration tonight is Resolution 2317.
Hear ye, hear ye, the Bedford County Board of Commissioners is now in session.
It's a resolution authorizing submission of an application for litter and trash collection
The Honorable Mayor Chad Graham is presiding.
Thank you. You can be seated. grants from the Department of Transportation, placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee with a favorable recommendation.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, first item of business is roll call by County Clerk Donna Thomas. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is Resolution Number 2318.
Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Boutwell, Commissioner Boyette.
That's a resolution authorizing the Bedford County Highway Department to perform work for all city and county entities in Bedford County.
Here.
Again, this was placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee with their
Commissioner Brothers.
Here.
Commissioner Epperson.
favorable recommendation.
Here.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Farrar.
Here.
Commissioner Hooker.
Second.
Here.
All right, any comments or questions?
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Maddox.
All in favor?
Here.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Any opposed? All right, now, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2319. And this is a resolution to amend Article 2, Section 2.120 A and B, flag lot and flag shaped lots, along with their respective definitions found in Article 7, Section 7.020 of the zoning resolution of Bedford County. Now, this was placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee, and that was what the public hearing was just involving.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. We're open for discussion. I believe our planning director is present if you have a question. Commissioner Hooker.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, could we have Chris explain just a little bit about this specifically with the flag lot and why we're making this adjustment, just for our understanding of the thought process of the planning commission?
Does the commissioner object to that? All right, hearing none, please come forward.
You don't hear me? Okay. So a number of years ago, what, five, six years ago, we had a number of lots that were developed, flag shaped lots, that were configured pretty awkwardly. And it really left the houses that resulted in the construction on those lots really looked haphazard. And at that time, we had several county commissioners, you know, as soon as those houses started going up, called the office and, you know, wanted to know what was going on and how that happened. And essentially, they were just designed by a surveyor who retired, knew our rules up and down, and he crossed every T and dotted every I. But the rules weren't fixed enough so that it didn't disallow some haphazard shaped lots to happen from it. So the planning commission, we studied the issue, and we decided that we would widen the road frontage requirements for flag shaped lots from 50 feet to 100 feet, just on flag shaped lots. And what that would do is that would give builders enough room, it would widen the building envelope enough so that they wouldn't have, the houses wouldn't have to overlap, they wouldn't have to have houses stacked one in front of the other and that sort of thing, which was really a big problem from that previous development. As a result, what we did is we created a set of rules that it didn't give any specific recommendation as far as how far, how much separation had to be between the houses, just that if you struck a line perpendicular to the road, that that line, that those houses couldn't cross each other. Like one house, let's just say the house on the rear, the right side of it couldn't overlap with the house on the front, the left side of it. So there was no overlapping. Problem is, is that despite the fact that they had wider setbacks, bigger building envelopes, they still, the builders would hire surveyors, they'd go out and pin the lots to the exact dimensions so those lots, those houses could be built stacked right there on the edges of each other. And so essentially, looking from the road, unless you were just right there in front of them, it still looked like they were, you know, stacked. And so a good example would be Longview Road. First thing you do, turn on Longview Road, you'll see a bunch of new houses, and that's the way they were configured. So to avoid that, what we did is we studied that situation again. The issue came, it arose essentially when we were looking at the plan development on Longview Road, and a lot of people were complaining about that development in particular, and the way it looked, and the character of it, and how it didn't fit with the character of the area. So we studied those regulations again, and what we decided was that in traditional development, in the A1 zone, in the A1 zoning classification, there's a 25-foot side setback for residential dwellings on every lot. That means if you've got, the lot to the left is 25, and the lot to the right is 25, that means the houses have to have a minimum separation of 50 feet. So what we did is we kept the 100-foot, we kept that just like it was, the 100-foot road frontage, in order to give them more room. And then the major change in this is that there has to be 50-foot of separation between homes now. That's what this resolution would do. The other thing it would do is if you had a minimum lot size of an acre, sometimes these flag lots would be positioned 2,000 feet off of a road. So a good portion of the lot was eat up in the road frontage in that 50-foot wide strip or that 100-foot wide strip, depending on what type of lot it was, as it moved all the way back, say, 2,000 feet. So the lot itself, or the building envelope itself, would be quite small when you factor in, you know, basically the flag staff portion of the lot. So another thing that this new resolution would do is it would force the surveyor to calculate the acreage just in the building envelope alone, and you would discount the flag staff portion of the lot. Those are the major things it does.
Is there any other comments or questions while we've got Director White in front of us? Okay, thank you for that comment. Is that, you're okay there? Okay. Any other comments before we vote? Now, there's a motion, a second, on the floor. You understand that you'd be voting for the recommendation amendment by the planning commission. So your names called, vote for or against.
Mr. Yaki. Commissioner Vick.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Neely.
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hooker.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar.
Uh.
Commissioner Epperson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boutwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? Eighteen ayes, zero noes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2320. I believe this is one of particular interest to the citizens out here tonight. A resolution to request our state legislative delegation introduce a private act before the General Assembly, authorizing the Bedford County Commission to enact a motor vehicle privilege tax, wheel tax, in compliance with TCA Code 5-8-102. And that was placed on the agenda by the Financial Management Committee. It was unanimous, but there was one member absent. So it was actually a 4-0 on that. What's the wishes of the body?
I request the resolution be read.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Right, so who, who, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow the people to speak. If, to be fair, I would love to have the opportunity for a 30-minute window, maybe for 15 minutes for those that oppose, and 15 minutes for those that are for, if we may.
I'd second. Okay, I think the first thing we've got to do is get a motion, a second, because this resolution is not active yet, okay? So is somebody going to make a motion? Otherwise, it's mute at the moment. Everybody's position, even reading it, would be my position. You agree with that? So we need a motion, a second. If you want to debate it, discuss it, act on it. If not, it'll die for a lack of a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Tony. So now we have a motion, a second. Now, before we go any further, if we could, I'd like to allow the county attorney to make a statement, and then we'll take your comments or your additional amendments you want, okay?
The purpose of this resolution or motion tonight is to request the state legislature to pass a private act allowing this body to enact a wheel tax at a later date. As most of you know, the legislators require, even though the law doesn't, that this pass by a two-thirds vote tonight to go up. Once it goes up, the private act will only enable the county at a later date to set a wheel tax. It provides that mechanism. Without that private act, it's not available to this body. Once it returns from Nashville, it will require another two-thirds vote by this body just to enact the mechanism. You still haven't done anything except have the ability to do that. At a later date, or dates, or never, for that matter, you would set the terms of the wheel tax, or the motor vehicle privilege tax, is what it's actually called. Some of those terms would include the statutory exemptions, which are disabled veterans, prisoners of war, and a few other statutory exemptions, which you would include in that, and then other exemptions which this body can plug in if they deem appropriate, and if there's some logical reason. You just can't exempt lawyers because you like all the lawyers. You could exempt other classifications if it had some reasonable basis for it. But that's at least three steps, if not four steps, down the line. And at that time, or at a subsequent meeting of this body, you would allocate where the funds go. In other words, they would be plugged into the budget and dictated by this body where they would be spent. So what you're doing tonight is just authorizing our legislator to enact this and send it back down. I can't see it happening with any specificity for at least four meetings, and probably more than that, and they don't have to be stacked in consecutive months. That'll be up to this body to determine how to do that. But tonight, you're doing one thing.
All right, and I'm of the understanding that part of Linda's motion was to read the resolution, which is appropriate. Are you in agreement with that, Commissioner Yaki? And then you would like to amend the motion to include public comment for up to 30 minutes with half and half having the opportunity?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so is everybody in, are you all in agreement with that amendment to, Tony, you accept that as a, okay, so everybody understands that we're putting this in motion, we're going to read, I'm going to read the resolution, and then you can debate, and we can also ask the public to speak. Okay? Everybody understand? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to this? So this is a resolution to request our state legislative delegation introduce a private act before the General Assembly, authorizing the Bedford County Commission to enact a motor vehicle privilege tax, wheel tax, in compliance with TCA Code 58102, placed on the agenda by the Financial Management Committee. Whereas the Bedford County Commission is responsible for funding the ongoing expenses and cost of operation of the Bedford County Government, and whereas the Bedford County Financial Management Committee is designated by the Bedford County Commission to be responsible for making recommendations and providing direction to fund the ongoing expenses and cost of operation of the Bedford County Government, and whereas the Bedford County Financial Management Committee did meet in their regular scheduled March the 28th, 2023 meeting, and whereas the Bedford County Financial Management Committee did request the following item as placed before the said committee. A motion to request the legislative delegation to introduce a private act before the Tennessee General Assembly, authorizing the Bedford County Commission to enact a motor vehicle privilege tax, wheel tax, in compliance with TCA Code 58102. And whereas the Bedford County Financial Management Committee did vote with a unanimous endorsement to send the request to be placed on the full commission agenda, to be discussed during the Bedford County Board of Commission regular meeting scheduled April the 11th, 2023 meeting, therefore be it resolved that the Bedford County Board of Commission did meet on April the 11th, 2023, and did endorse in an affirmative, two-thirds commissioners did meet, no, I'm sorry, two-thirds majority vote, to recommend this said in compliance with TCA 58102, and further did request the above stated private act be introduced before the 113th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, the public welfare requiring it, and be it finally resolved that the true copy of the resolution be spread on the commission minutes. Now, this is what's being considered. Does everybody understand that? What's the purpose of reading this? Okay, so now we're open for discussion. So Commissioner Thomas, Adam Thomas.
I'll make this brief. I just wanted to begin by stating that I believe everyone here, commissioners and citizens, all have the same goal, to ensure a better Bedford County. We all want safer schools, properly funded emergency services, amongst other things. We do not need to backbite or name-call during this process when we do not agree on how to accomplish our goals. With this being said, I do not believe it is our right course of action to circumvent the people's right to vote on something that has always been their right to vote on. We cannot go around something solely based on the fact that we believe the people of Bedford County will vote against it. I believe the wheel tax should go to referendum to let the people decide. But before so, we should make sure that we have specified where the funds will go. If we want them to be used for SROs, whether we want them to be used for emergency services, we should make sure that the county citizens know this, and if so we do this, I encourage the citizens to vote for it.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to allow the public to speak?
The short answer is yes. Do you want to have debate among the commission first, or would you like to hear from the public first?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to hear from the public first, if that's okay with the commission.
Does anyone object to that? Okay, we're staying on the concept of three minutes per person, equal number, not to exceed 30 minutes. You in agreement with that?
Yes, sir, and 15 minutes for those that are for, and those 15 for those that oppose.
Right, but three minutes a person, correct? You accept that? Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, so Commissioner Yaki.
Could you explain that this does not mean that we are passing a wheel tax tonight?
Yeah, I'm happy to reiterate that. I feel like that's what Attorney Bobo was making clear. What came before, what's before the body tonight is asking for the opportunity to ask the legislator to pass a private act that would empower the county body here tonight, the county commission, the opportunity to adopt a wheel tax if they so choose going forward. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bobo, is that if we get permission to do that from the state, can we still send it to public referendum if we vote that way when it comes back?
I don't see any reason you could not.
Because that would be an option.
That would be an option at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Bobo.
Okay, so we're ready to hear from the public. So if you are, you want to start with four or against? Commissioner Maddox, which one do you really have first?
I would like to start with four, please.
A four? Okay, so if someone in the audience would like to speak for up to three minutes, that is four, considering the wheel tax, considering the wheel tax for it, please come forward to the, yeah, I didn't think that was correct. All right, to the lectern. So is there anybody in the audience that would be in support of the wheel tax? Yeah, if you don't want to speak, you can raise your hand, whatever you want. Okay, well, if you'd come to the, do you want to speak, or you just want to be acknowledged? Okay, I was pretty sure you would. Okay, all right. So when you come to the lectern, you're going to need to press and hold the button the entire time you're talking, okay? So we, three minutes, please.
I apologize for not being a little more prepared. I didn't know we would have the opportunity to speak tonight, and I appreciate you giving us a voice tonight. My name is Kathy Reed. I am a lifelong resident in Bedford County. I've been here my whole life. I was about six months old when my mother moved back here. So I feel like I have a voice in this community. My husband and I have raised our children here. I have been an educator in this community for 36 years. This is my 36th year. And what I'm fixing to say, some of you, I know, were not on the commission in the past, but it's always been said from this commission, we will not raise taxes, we will not raise taxes. There are people in this community that have ran on, we will not raise taxes. While I don't want anyone's taxes raised, it is time to protect our children and do what's right for our children. Our schools are not up to standard, to the systems that are around us. And I'm not just talking about SROs, I'm talking about the quality of the schools. I am the principal at Aiken Elementary, and Aiken Elementary, we've worked really hard, and maintenance have worked really hard, to clean up the building, to paint, to freshen it up. But it's 60 years old. We have a state-of-the-art prison jail in this community, and I realize that we were forced to build that. But you need to go and see what some of the children in your community go to school in. But it is time for us to put SROs in our, in every single elementary school. And not, and not just for the intruders coming in, we need that to protect us from upset parents. And I've had situations in the last two weeks where I've needed support. Thank goodness, Shelbyville Police Department is always available when needed, but it is time for us to do something. I have to dispute this whole taxation without representation. You are elected, we elected you to do what's right for our community, and sometimes, I know this because I am a leader, you have to make a hard decision, even when you know it's going to make other people upset. And we have elected, and we have elected you to do that for us. We have given you that power. So tonight's vote, I feel like, honestly, I don't really care how you fund it. I know the governor is giving some money for SROs. My understanding is it's not going to be enough. And it's not going to be enough to put an SRO in every school. If you choose not to, I need you to be at Aiken Elementary every morning and afternoon during dismissal to help us out if you don't think we need SROs because you would desperately change your mind if you had to face what teachers and administrators have to face today, in today's society. So we're just asking for your support. We're asking you to do what's right for our children.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so now let's rotate to someone that is not for the wheel tax. Did you want to come up? Okay. Someone that is opposed to the wheel tax, don't feel like we should do it. Commissioner Anderson, you got, oh, Commissioner Anderson, I'm sorry. John Anderson, boy, you, yeah, forgive me. All right, press and hold while you speak.
My name is John Anderson. I live in Bellbuckle. I'm a retired school teacher. I'm just going to mention in passing that my great-great-great-great-great-grandfather, Joseph Britton, fought in the American Revolution, came over here and across the mountains to Bedford, well, it wasn't Bedford County then, he helped settle and establish Bedford County, and Britton Street is named for him. So I just mentioned that, I don't know why. It is not my purpose to say I am for or against a wheel tax. I have an opinion, definitely, but that's not my concern. I've been criticized lately by a lady friend for raising my voice when I get angry. I'm working on it. I'm not going to raise my voice, but I feel like it. The thing that concerns me is not the tax issue, it's who gets to decide. Everybody in this room, everybody knows that most of the citizens of Bedford County don't want a wheel tax. Now, some do. Some do. I've heard people argue cogently for a wheel tax. But most citizens, the citizens of Bedford County, do not want it, and an attempt is being made to wrest away their ability to make that decision. And I have had it explained to me by a member of this body that the problem is that the citizens of Bedford County fundamentally are not smart enough to make that decision, so these folks have to make it for us. I reject that. I'll shut up now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that was, that was against, so we're back to the fours. Is there someone that wants to speak in favor of the wheel tax or the consideration of the wheel tax? Okay, I don't see anybody. We'll come back to it. Is there another person who wants to speak against the wheel tax? Okay, I saw the lady first, okay, so she'll come up. If you state your name and where you live, in three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ree Ford. I live on Cooper Town Road in Unionville, and I recently heard about the wheel tax. And while I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, what really concerns me is how the decision is being made. And honestly, I'm not sure if everybody on this committee truly represents our community and truly makes decisions based on what's best for our community. We saw that with the subdivision discussions, where I felt like it was more self-interest than the community's interest. So with this wheel tax, I'm, I know this is an additional way to get increased in income, and we're using an emotional point of getting the SROs and, you know, funding something that we're all emotionally attached to. And believe me, I have two little ones sitting back there, and I want all of our kids to be safe in the schools. But to use this emotional point to push something through that the majority of people don't want, and then you feel guilty when you vote against it because then people feel like you don't care about the kids, is not fair. I think we really need to look at the budget in detail and see where there is money available for the SROs and for the schools. Are there other ways to gain the income? And if you choose to have a wheel tax, can we get then a guarantee that the property tax will not be increased? Can we get a guarantee that there will be five-acre minimum lots so we don't add in addition to, you know,
Okay, I, I saw the lady first. Okay, so she'll come up? If you state your name and where you live, and three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ree Ford. I live on Cooper Town Road in Unionville. And I recently heard about the wheel tax. And, um, while I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, what really concerns me is how the decision is being made. And honestly, I'm not sure if everybody on this committee truly represents our community and truly, um, makes decisions based on what's best for our community. We saw that with the subdivision discussions where I felt like, um, it was more self-interest than the community's interest. So with this wheel tax, um, I'm, I know this is an additional way to get increased in income. And we're using an emotional point of getting the SROs and, uh, you know, funding something that we're all emotionally attached to. And believe me, I have two little ones sitting back there, and I want all of our kids to be safe in the schools. But to use this emotional point to push something through that the majority of people don't want, and then you feel guilty when you vote against it because then people feel like you don't care about the kids, is not fair. I think we really need to look at the budget in detail and see where there is money available for the SROs and for the schools. Are there other ways to gain in, uh, the income? And if you choose to have a wheel tax, can we get then a guarantee that the property tax will not in, be increased? Can we get a guarantee that there will be five acre minimum lots so we don't, uh, add in addition to, you know, the, the money that is now spent on wheel tax? We have now these people coming in and these subdivisions being built, there's more income. So I almost feel like this is, this is not an honest, uh, discussion that we're having here around that, that wheel tax. And that there's a lot more to it behind the scenes that we're aware of. So I really want to encourage you that, that we look at the budget in detail and really pay close attention to where the money is before we make a decision that continuously burdens the, the citizens. Because I'm telling you, I'm struggling financially. Um, and any more taxes would be really hard, and I'm pretty sure a lot of people in the community feel this way. So please take, take a close look at the budget that we have before you add additional, uh, burden on the, the people in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you. All right, we'll give another opportunity. Is anybody that's for it? If you're, or you're in the middle? Well, we'll accept that. Come forward. I'm trying to be fair about giving them the opportunity. So you got three minutes. State who you are, please, and... Sorry, the, can you push the button? You gotta push and hold the whole time or it won't.
Brooke Sanders, and it pains me to get up here and say this because no matter what decision you go with, you're gonna have a group of people mad at you. There are a lot of teachers here that I love. My momma worked in the school system for years and years. There is no one that will stand up here and tell you that we don't need SROs in our school. We do. I've seen it. Everybody's seen it. We need that. But the way that this is going about is not okay. If you want to take a private act, that's fine, but have a detailed plan. Show us where the money is going. You don't need to just sign it up and say, "We're gonna do a private act, and we'll determine where the money goes later." That's not okay. Not in this time. We need a detailed plan to see where the money is going before you do anything.
Okay, we got, we, we've got one more against, okay, working off of what we agreed to. So, uh, whichever one of you wants to be, uh, you want to decide among yourself? You want me to pick one? Okay, that's not who I would have picked. Okay. Oh, no, that's a, all right, come up. Sir, if you had to state your name and, and just hold the button while you speak, please.
Yeah, I'm John Clark. So I live out on Midland Road. Uh, nobody's for a wheel tax, I don't think. And I'm old enough, and I came to Bedford County in nineteen ninety. I lived in Rutherford County when they passed the wheel tax. And it sounds just like what you're doing here and what the gentleman in the orange shirt said. "We're gonna make it just for SROs." I was in Rutherford County, and remember, I was a teenager. But I remember when they did it, and they passed a fifteen-dollar wheel tax. And it was a public referendum, and they sold it to you because they said, "It's gonna be for ten years, and we're gonna build these two new high schools, Oakland and Riverdale." Their lips were moving. They were lying, folks. Because it's fifty-something years later. Evidently, they never paid for those schools, and Rutherford County's got one of the highest wheel taxes in the state. So, no, no wheel tax because they're gonna take your money and do something else with it. This commission has raised taxes four out of the last five years. Uh, you got enough money. You don't need my wheel tax money. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so technically, there's one slot that's for, or I'll even give you the benefit of the doubt and say neutral. Uh, if you, are you, are you for or at least neutral? And, okay, I'll accept the middle, and then that'll take care of what we agreed to. All right, yes, sir. If you'll come, state your name and hold the button, please.
My name's Gene Viddock. I live in Normandy, Tennessee. Uh, I was a police officer for twenty-seven years. And in nineteen ninety-nine, I went to our school superintendent and explained to him the SRO program. And he said that he wasn't interested in the program unless the officer was not in uniform, didn't have a gun, and he didn't want a police car there. And that was in April. The following week, we had the Columbine shooting, and he called my office twenty times trying to get an officer there. So where I worked, it was forty-nine thousand people, twenty-seven square mile, hundred, twenty-seven square miles, and a hundred-and-ten-man police department. And we've had school resource officers there since two thou, or since nineteen ninety-nine. And I like the idea of a school resource officer, and like the lady said, I want the money to go for the officer. Now, I contacted the clerk's office, and they tell me that there's, in twenty-twenty-one, there's forty-nine thousand passenger cars, seventeen hundred motorcycles, and twen, and two thousand commercial vehicles. So at ten dollars a person, or ten dollars a car, that would come in under the estimate of what the school, uh, the newspaper reported that would be needed to put officers in the rest of the schools. And, but then I've heard other numbers where it's as high as seventy-five dollars or a hundred dollars for a wheel tax, which is much more than what's needed. So I think we need to be transparent, and if you say this money's gonna be used for, the wheel tax is gonna be used for the officers and to outfit them. I know it's, I mean, it comes out to seven dollars and seventeen cents if you run those numbers just for the salaries. However, you got benefits and you gotta buy equipment. And I know the governor's given a hundred-and-forty million dollars for officers, another forty million dollars for school security. So all that stuff needs to be taken into consideration. But I think the main thing is that we need to be totally transparent and say, "This is where the money's gonna go." If we're taking ten or fifteen dollars, I, I believe we need officers in all the schools. It's a really good thing. You need the right officer because they're the first person a lot of these kids have contact with in the police department, and that kind of sets how they think of the police department the rest of their life. So you want them to have a good interaction. You don't want it to be bad, and it, it pays dividends down the road. So I think school resource officers in all the schools are good, but I think the, the funding part is where we're getting a little bit of a rub here. So, thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right. So now, on the commission floor, uh, let's open it. Commissioner Hooker?
All right, I want to just kind of start off by addressing a couple of the narratives that we're hearing. Um, number one is if we vote no on this resolution, that we won't get SROs in schools. Well, that's false. Um, also, that if we don't vote for this resolution, we don't want SROs. That is also false. I have family that's in, that are teachers. I have friends that are teachers. I have kids in the elementary school. I coach in those schools. I want them as much as anybody. I just want it done the right way. We need it planned out. We need it transparent, and we need to appropriate the money. I will be requesting to be placed on the finance committee agenda to present two proposals at the next meeting. One, to address the remaining money that will possibly be short from the governor's plan to fund SROs through the state's twenty-three, twenty-four budget. This will require no new money, no new taxes, and is addressed by using current money that is not currently used in other means. Number two, I'll also place on the agenda an item that will address school safety by replacing all the locks in the schools, in the school classrooms that are needed. I spoke at length over the last two weeks with Dr. Garrett, and those are two of her main priorities. In the same proposal, I will also be requesting reappropriation of funds that will go directly towards the school budget to address ongoing safety needs from the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget, or for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget moving forward. So as you see, there are other ways to complete this task without increasing the budget nor raising taxes. Now, let's talk about this vote. I have received dozens of phone calls, messages, voicemails, and texts with a very obviously frustrated and furious community that has felt betrayed by the very elected officials they trusted to serve them. I have also received calls from people that would support a wheel tax, but that's only if we lower the property taxes and allow a referendum. The unfortunate thing is, it was presented not even knowing how much a wheel tax would be, not knowing how much they would appro, where they would appropriate the money, not even knowing how much money is needed to go for projects that we don't even know about. I'm blown away at the knee-jerk reaction and failure to plan appropriately prior to presenting a plan that would put a fourth tax increase burden on the citizens in the same number of years. This was a huge need four years ago when they raised taxes. They were two years ago when they reappraised and taxes increased, and they were last year when the taxes increased. The budget four years ago was nineteen million dollars. After the past four years, the budget has increased almost fifteen million dollars, almost doubling our budget. But in those four years, nobody could find five hundred thousand dollars to pay for SROs. This is not a new problem. We have needed them for over five years, but now we're in a hurry to create yet another tax burden and another increase on the backs of people without allowing them to vote on it. All while suffering through some of the highest inflation in the last fifty years and one of the worst economies in the last sixty. We need to dive into this budget and find money. Not always raise taxes, because when is enough enough? It's when we raise the budget twenty more million, twenty-five more million? We can always find needs. We will have somebody coming up here needing something every meeting. But we have to prioritize them and not fund everything. Now, school safety is the priority we have to fund, so that means we gotta look at other things to cut to be able to pay for it. It's what we do in our personal budgets at home every single day. We cannot be focused on renovations, recarpeting offices, and acquiring new buildings just so we have material to put on election flyers. We learned last week that we have basically ignored proper school funding to increase the county budget over the past five years. The schools have increased in a budget in three, for three million over the last four years, and that's almost two million short. While we've inflated our county budget over twelve million. I want to challenge my fellow commissioners on the finance committee to learn that no matter that it was done for a good cause, the process of going around the citizens is a non-starter. I want to challenge them to revisit this plan. This time, send it for special election so that the people will have an opportunity to vote on it. I challenge them to bring forth a property tax reduction that is equal to the increase received in the wheel tax, and I challenge them to assign that money permanently so that it does not appear to be a slush fund. But assign that total amount to money to roads, schools, and public safety in a breakdown that is permanent. People will support a wheel tax if you can work together with everyone. They will not support, support it if you do it in a sneaky manner and try to ram one through without their voice or vote being heard. They want transparency, not a group of elected officials that are planning ways to try and tax them more and spend more of their money. Lastly, I will challenge all of my commissioners, all of my fellow commissioners and our mayor to start to govern this county in a different way. A new way in which we will work together through study sessions to find common ground that we can all live with. Not play politics, not play on emotions, and not working in small groups for our own agendas. This has to be a team effort, that must be a group that mutually works for a common goal, a goal for working for the people, not our own agendas. We have to avoid trying to make decisions just to get re-elected. I know this is not a popular speech for some, nor one I have even enjoyed giving. But things must change. It cannot be behind the scenes, "Good old boy, politics as usual. Let's debate in the open. Let's ask the people what they want, and let's keep Bedford County beautiful and give the citizens their voice back."
You want to speak? Commissioner Maddox?
About six weeks ago, on March seventh, at eight forty a.m., I received a call from Commissioner Yaki stating that they, meaning a group of people, had intentions to put us right here where we are today. And that they wanted to give me the heads up and didn't want me blindsided regarding their plan. It was also mentioned that the citizens would vote it down if given the opportunity, and that was the reason why they were going the route they were going, to not allow the people to vote. I politely listened and then explained my displeasure to that tactic and stated that I thought it was wrong to bypass the people. But now here we are. A handful of you here in this room have succeeded in circumventing the citizens that trusted and voted you into office, the very people that trusted you and had their best interests at heart. Now, we as a commission have to vote on whether to move forward with a process to implement a wheel tax without proper, true representation of the people we serve. I strongly feel that how we got here today is disrespectful to the citizens of the county and inappropriately handled at best. On three twenty-eight, Commissioners Tony Smith and Linda Yaki first and seconded the motion for the resolution, and it passed through the finance committee. I personally believe that several other individuals knew well in advance that they would be bringing this topic before the committee, the finance committee, that night. Again, a long time in advance, they at least knew about it before March the seventh because that's when I received my phone call. With that said, no sign of this wheel tax, which is a big deal. It's not a little item that just finds its way as new business on, on the agenda, on the, on the whim. This is a big item. It never made its way to the agenda for that finance committee meeting on three twenty-eight. It's not on the agenda sheet. I have it right here. And the people of the county were none the wiser that this was even gonna be discussed, thus never even knew that they should be at that public meeting that night to voice their concerns. What part of this seems fair? None of it. Just a few days ago, someone that lives outside of my district called me, talked to me about this issue. We shared thoughts, a few ideas. One thing that stuck out really summed out, summed up how I, how I see some county officials in this room perceived treating their role and the people that they should be serving. This individual mentioned to me that they received a call from their own commissioner, and this commissioner was trying to convince them to agree with the wheel tax during the conversation. The citizen asked if they would be able to voice their opinion tonight at this meeting. And that commissioner told that individual, "I don't know. We're thinking about it, but if it gets negative, we're shutting it down." The commissioner also made another statement when they said, "It's not a decision for the people anyway. It's to be made by us eighteen commissioners." Folks, for the way, for way too long, this type of behavior has been a part of the culture of our local government in Bedford County. Perceived secrecy, perceived back-room deals, political posturing, and political influence using government employees as political pawns. All of this creates a level of distrust that makes it hard for those of us that want to do the right thing to operate. How can we explain to our county citizens about a potential good idea that may even be a good idea? When there are things like this that happen, how can we expect them to trust us? Bedford County citizens, I want to remind you, each time that they raise your taxes, they've had a hostage or a crisis, all backed by D-list acting, grandstanding theatrics to try to prove and persuade their agenda. I actually find it condescending and quite frankly disrespectful. And I know that many of you do as well because you tell me. The last time they wanted to raise your taxes, which they did, the hostage was county employee raises, and the false crisis was a potential reduction in emergency services. I actually supported a raise for most county personnel, and I certainly understand the importance of emergency services. Both, I feel, could have been accomplished without a tax increase. This time, it's SROs and roads, complete with tactics and attempted shaming for anyone not in support of their plan by saying that we don't care about the safety of our youth or support the SROs in schools. Y'all, let me be very clear. I actually do support the SROs in schools for multiple reasons. I think it's a great idea. Let's take care of this need. Governor Lee recently supported funding, and we have funding coming for SROs. But I also have a great idea, and it's pretty simple, and it makes perfect sense. Let's take care of this need and all other legitimate needs by using the money and resources that we already have. Let's manage our budget. It's all about honest budgeting and priority of spending. I absolutely believe that there is questionable spending happening within this county by this current administration. I understand why some would want a wheel tax. It'll help level set the playing field about, among all for, for, in regards to taxes. But before we do anything, I believe that we need a forensic third-party audit conducted, and I believe we need one anyway, in order to level set our budget, and this includes prioritization of spending. Once this happens, if additional funding is needed, which it won't, a transparent campaign should then take place. This is where we messed up. Should take place to educate the commissioners and the citizens about the need and the viable potential solution. Right now, overall, I feel that people do not trust this local government administration. And quite frankly, I don't blame them, because I don't either. I do pledge to do my part to help bring forth accountability. I will always stand up for what is right, and I'll never support undermining the people of this county. And that's what's been attempted here today. No matter what, as we move forward, I want to be very clear because I don't plan to mince my words or waste any time. As one of the county's newest commissioners, I offer this notice to the powers that be and a pledge to the good people of our county. Our department heads, mayor, finance committee, need to come to the table with a good, clean budget this upcoming year, and it better ooze transparency. If not, I will do my part to hold folks firmly accountable. The people of our county deserve better, and they sure ain't getting it now. Regarding this wheel tax and the process to initiate it, I stand firmly against it, and I'm trusting and praying that the common sense of a few good, respectful commissioners here tonight is gonna trump the lack of common sense and respect that led us here by a handful of others. And two, the handful of other county commissioners that support this tactic, do your job and listen and talk to your people and quit talking down at them. Contrary to what you think, you don't know more than the people you serve. I know what many of your folks are saying because they're calling me. They're not even in my district, and they're calling just to say thank you. The folks that you are supposed to serve, folks, that inspires me and drives me and fuels my fire more than you can ever imagine to fight for the people of this county. We serve them. They don't serve us. One last thing before I finish. I suggest that nobody else try to circumvent these fine folks again. I promise you, I will stand fiercely against it. Do your job. May God protect us from this nonsense, and may God bless the good people of Bedford County.
Commissioner Tony Smith.
Mr. Chairman, folks, I've been on this commission for about 20 years now, and I understand a little bit about the way the county operates. Currently, this county is spending every dollar of our taxpayers' money the way that the prior commission voted it be spent. Now, with this being said, I am the one that proposed this tax, folks. I'll take full credit for it, and I fully stand up for it. The reason I stand up for it is as follows. Few years ago, we built community school. We cut one wing off that we could have added to it at that time at a cost of $2 million. Now it's $6 million. Folks, that is a $4 million taxes that we are putting upon our people. Currently, we are building Cartwright School. Okay, if we'd have built this school a few years ago, when we first started talking it, it was 32 million bucks. Folks, it's 38 today. That is six more million. That is $10 million burden that we are putting on every taxpayer in our county. Now, our current needs for our county, yeah, the state's going to pay part of the SROs, not all of it. We're going to have to pay part of it. We need a couple of more wings onto schools to get kids out of portables. We need ambulances, we need fire trucks, we need police cars, juvenile detention center. Right now, we don't know where that is. It could be two and a half million, it could be five million, it could be none. But, anyway, if you add all this up, we're looking at 20 million bucks. That's right now, that is needed in Bedford County. Now, if we wait, it's going to be seven, eight years before we can borrow this type of money. If we wait seven or eight years, how much is this 20 million going to be in eight years from now at the way inflation and economy is going? We're going to add another eight to 10 million to our taxpayers. This is what I am trying to avoid, and that's all I am trying to avoid. I am not trying to circumvent anybody. We were voted by our people in our county to come up here and use our common sense to manage, maintain and operate Bedford County in a way that it should be managed to where we can keep our head above water, we can float and raise a decent family in this community. That is the reason we are up here, to make a hard decision when one has to be made. Tonight, we need to make a business decision. Do we want our county to move forward, or do we want to add 30 more million dollars to our taxpayers? Property tax is going to be coming up, and hey, they don't get to vote on their property tax, folks. They don't get to vote on it. We can pay a little now, and we can pay a lot later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Neely.
Okay, I'm going to start with, and mine is not a prepared speech, but I'm going to say what I'm going to say. Going into this, I spent 20 years on the school board. I went through a lot of building programs. And the school that's being built currently could have been done a while back. I fought it, I'm not going into details, but the school board's ability to do what they need to do in some areas was circumvented by people who are in this room. As we continue to move forward, I have watched time and again circumvention. I sat here last year in June, and I watched the Finance Committee that had spent months working on a budget vote to send it to the commission floor. I watched a commissioner stand, give a speech to circumvent three or four months' worth of work and the entire Finance Committee and what they had done to raise their taxes, raise your taxes again, and finally settled on 35 cents. Now, we've heard from others how much the tax base has increased over the last few years, and folks, it's been a lot, realizing that there's been a lot of increase. But last year's tax increase was done. It was 35 cents, and for those of you who want to know how that comes about, a penny in Bedford County is worth $128,000. That tax increase equated to $4,480,000. We gave three cents of that to the Highway Department for $384,000. We gave, we had a grant that we had to match for $128,000, and that left $3,968,000 that had to be put into salaries because that's what they said. Folks, when I look at the budget, and I am not opposed to people making a fair wage, I believe in it. But when I look in some of those lines and the amount of raise that was given in one year is almost appalling to me. None of us in this room have received a nine, 10, 11, $12,000 raise in one year. But yet, we are asking citizens who are on fixed income, low income, making 15, $16 an hour, to come up with more money to do a wheel tax, more money to do a property tax increase. And I personally do not feel that we have been transparent. I think things have been done that circumvent the people and in times circumvent even commissioners who, if they're not in the right place. Now, if I'm offending people, I'm sorry, but this is how I feel, and I have the right to say that. I have sat and watched time and again things happen that are not right. For me personally, I want what's good for Bedford County. But I cannot continue to support things that are driving our children away. They cannot afford to have a home here, they can't afford apartments here, they cannot live here. We're sending our seniors away. They're having to sell homes, move in with their children and make alternatives. We all have to adjust our budgets, and I think that as far as SROs go, I support SROs. I do, and I think that we can find the money in our budget to do that. On the very night I received my phone call to encourage me to support the wheel tax, I picked up the Shelbyville Times Gazette. I've not heard anything about this yet, but Pat Marsh's article stated that Bedford County is going to receive $3.2 million under a Transportation Modernization Act. What are we going to use that money for? Because some of this was slated for roads. I just don't think we have a full picture of the money that the state is going to send us. I think that every commissioner up here in this well, in this area, needs to be sure they understand every aspect of this budget. If you're going to sit on finance, you need to know how this comes together. You need to be able to figure out and look at it and see where these lines are, and I'm not sure that's always been done, or if it has been done, maybe we just look at it differently. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not accusing anything. I'm just saying that it is time that the commission do better and that we support what our citizens ask for.
All right. Commissioner Farrar.
I'd like to speak as well. I'm going to give some background on the wheel tax. Anybody can look it up at ctas.tennessee.edu. And to give you a generalization of, of our surrounding counties, of course Bedford County has never had a wheel tax. Rutherford County's wheel tax today is $52.50. Coffey County does not have a wheel tax. Franklin County does not have a wheel tax. Lincoln County's wheel tax is $75. Moore County does not have a wheel tax. Marshall County's wheel tax is $50. So that gives you a, a general idea of the wheel taxes. There's four counties here counting us that do not have wheel taxes in the south central of middle Tennessee, and there's three that does. Lincoln County being the highest at $75, and, and Marshall County at the lowest end at $50. Now, when you look at the entire statistics, the highest wheel tax in the state is Lake County, it's in west Tennessee, it's $100. And there's four counties that have a $25 wheel tax. So, I don't know how pertinent that is to, to what we're going to decide tonight, but there's 59 counties that do have a wheel tax in this state as compared to 36 that do not. So we're one of the counties, one of the 36 that do not have a wheel tax. I, I, I was concerned as well about legislating, it seems like from the top down instead of the bottom up. It seems like we did this last year at the 11th hour. No, no part of that, I'm still not proud of it. I'm, I'm still unhappy about the, the situation unfolded there on June, June 28th. I, I just can't get over it. But outside of that, I think we need to wait here. We certainly need to wait on, on Governor Lee and the state legislature. I know they've earmarked some, there could be some more money coming from the state legislature, I don't know, but I think we're a little premature and sort of jumping the gun here. I think we should have kept our powder dry a little longer and, and, and look at, see what's coming from the state and Governor Lee. As far as I'm concerned, this is a school board issue. This needs to be decided in a, in a school board. Much of this, whether we're talking about teacher salaries, which, that's the one that I'm most dear to. I want our teachers to be retained, I want to retain our experienced teachers, and I want them taken care of. The, the teachers are the main thing in this county. It, it's, it's not buildings, and certainly we got to have public safety. We can't do without anything, and certainly we need buildings as well because of the population growth. But we, we need to retain our teachers, we need to get our students out of portables. I don't think anybody on this commission disagrees with any of that, and we need to make sure we have school safety. Now, there's one thing that this county was founded on, and it's the premise of one man, one vote. Now, when we allow a private act such as up to vote here, we violate this principle. This country was founded on one man, one vote, and, and if we accept a private act, we're taking the right to vote away from our constituents, and I'm, I'm not for that. And I'm for education. I was in education 38 years. I taught school for 20 years at Central High School, and I was one year at Community, and I was administrator the other 30, 37 years, and, and 34 when we're here in Bedford County. So I am for education, wholeheartedly. There's several other things we need to look at. I, I think besides SROs, I'm not without, without standing of some of them, of, of some teachers and coaches and other people that have military training to get special training and to go into our schools and be able to, to carry a gun without paying an SRO. Now, that's another whole thing, I'm not, I don't know why I brought it up here. It needs to be brought up somewhere else at the school board, but it, it's something else where, where we can pay for somebody that's already there to, to, to have more school security. I mean, there's other things we need to look at. So I, I do think we need to start legislating from the bottom up and not the top down, and, and there's shades of what, what happened here in my mind, June 28th last year. So I, I, I'm sorry, I cannot vote for private act. I will vote for a, a wheel tax that goes to referendum. I'm for it 100%, and I'll vote for it if it goes to referendum and if it passes in this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I do, Commissioner Hooker, I will look forward to seeing that proposal on SROs, would be happy to look at it. I worked school safety for 15 years in this county. I've been through every square foot. So has Commissioner Thomas with me, the sheriff. One of the biggest things, and, and we probably might be able to do SROs out of the current budget, the priority we have to have now, and I don't really care how we fund it out of this body, property tax, somewhere else, wheel tax, we've got to get the kids out of the portable classrooms now. I have sat in front, I sat in front of this body as the homeless security director and had commissioners look like they wanted to stab me because I was telling them they needed to take action years ago about these portable classrooms, and I found out later they just don't want to deal with the tax issue involved in doing that. They put that priority over the safety. I'm talking about the portable classrooms, because that's a big ticket item. We've done a good job of funding Cartwright Elementary, that's going to take care of a big chunk of it. But these other schools that have that issue, some of which kids come out of my district and go to Liberty School, we need to take care of that too. So all I'm asking you guys, as we go through this process, figure out this year how we're going to get rid of those portable classrooms. Thank you.
Commissioner Bautwell.
I just want to say, I've had some articles in the newspaper, and Bedford County is one of three counties that funds education. We're talking about local funding now, that funds local education below...
Are you holding your mic?
Okay. Bedford County is one of three counties in the state that fund below what the state So, and really, we are the low, we fund education the lowest of any county in the state on a per people basis. And we're not talking about portables, we're not talking about SROs, we're talking about day-to-day operation of schools, having the number of teachers that we need. We have one of the highest non-English speaking groups here in this county as anybody across the state, any county across the state. In fact, we're number six. And people that can't speak English require a little bit extra help. And you can't expect a teacher to be able to teach Johnny and then focus on the person that can't speak English and then give Johnny adequate attention, or give the other person adequate attention. So we're understaffed far as the number of teachers. Now, when it comes to wheel tax, you know, I really think probably voting on it by the public is probably the best route, because I think we're going to poison the well soul if we do it any other way. And I think we're going to make it harder to raise money in the future for schools. But at some point, schools have got to become a priority. All I've heard tonight, "Well, we need a fire truck," and no, no, Mark, no, no slinging at you, "or we, we need a road." Okay. "Or, or we need this, we need that." I have not heard anybody talking about the day-to-day general operation of schools. And it's somewhere, that's got to be a priority. If we want our county, you know, if we, if we have better educated folks and people can get better jobs, they're going to make more money, they have better houses, they're going to spend more money. So we really won't have, shouldn't have to raise taxes because they're going to be generating more income, more property value or sales tax, so we won't need to raise the taxes. So at some point, we've just got to get Bedford County's priorities straight. You know, in the last four years, the general school fund budget increased three tenths of 1%. That's well below the rate of inflation. And education has not been a priority in this county for many, many years, and I'm just going to be the, if I had to be the one person that stands up and, and gets red in the face and, and talk too loud, I will. But we just need to do something for our children. I've got a grandchild now, and I just know how important that is. I look at her and I think, you know, she's got to have a good education and what it's going to mean to her. So that's all I've got to say.
Commissioner Yaki.
Many of you are here tonight because you were told, told that there was a wheel tax to be on the agenda, or that there was going to be a property tax on the agenda. Both are not true. Tonight's vote is a procedural vote on how, if and whenever, a wheel tax might be imposed. We have not even started the budget process. We don't know how much this hypothetical wheel tax would be. We don't even know what it would be for. I have had many conversations, I have had many conversations mainly with the property owners in my district and educators, as I explained what the actual vote was about, which was as an option, as well as the referendum is an option, that the commissioners could decide on a wheel tax. That's all this is. The property owners in my district are tired of being the only ones to fund the county. 15,000 property owners out of a population of 50,000 carry the burden for the whole county. Our educators, as we're hearing across the world, across the floor, we've got so many needs, but our educators want their SROs, hopefully we will get, and as Mr. Baut, as Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson said, to get these kids out of the portables now. 1,100 children are in the portables. The new school will leave 238 left at South Side and Liberty School. And for how long? So why bring this issue of allowing, and this is all it's about, allowing the county commission to make a decision on a wheel tax? commission to make a decision on a wheel tax, as they so do for a property tax? First is time. Should monies be needed and a referendum were asked this, just pretend this year? It would be December at the earliest before a special election could be called for at a cost of $30,000. So you might as well wait until the March primary. If the referendum were to fail, another year has gone by. So the second reason, Commissioner Smith and I brought this before finance and then to you all, is when an individual makes the choice on a tax increase, it's themselves. And I get that. I don't know that I'd vote for it. And precedence has shown a wheel tax will not pass in this county. 1988 under Paul Parker, no. A wheel tax in 2005 under Jimmy Woodson, no. A wheel tax in 2016 under Mayor Ray, no. So if you look at all the tax rates through the years, as soon as that referendum failed, there was a property tax increase. Half of the people in my district are farmers. There are two ways for the county to raise money and substantial monies. There's a wheel tax and a property tax. So why did the legislature, you think, allow for a procedural thing that the commission could make the decision? Well, 59 counties, two-thirds of the counties in Tennessee have a wheel tax, and 20 of those counties out of the 59 use the method that could be used by this commission if we had permission. So why would a county like Henry County, and I ask, is one of those that asks that the county commission make the decision? And it's because they could not get a referendum to pass. We've not even begun the budget process. We don't know what a wheel tax will be, if there is one. We don't know if there's a property tax needed. We have not begun the budget process. But why not have all the options that you can have available to you when you make all the decisions that you hope to make? And we'll say it one more time. Tonight's vote is not to raise property taxes. Tonight's vote is not to impose a wheel tax. It is to give this body an option as we go through the budget process to make hard decisions. I hope none of us wants to see this county go backwards. We need our public service to be top-notch. We need our roads to be paved. We need to get the SROs in place. Hopefully, we'll have those. We need to get these kids out of portables, and the list goes on. And to Mr. Maddox, I want to tell you one thing. I've lived in this county all my life, and anybody in this audience knows me. They know I'm going to shoot you straight. I'm going to shoot them straight. I'm going to tell them like it is. These people have been misled in what was going to be going on tonight.
Order, sir, please.
I've lived here all my life. You haven't. And I called you to tell you what was floating around in mine and Commissioner Smith's heads to bring before the finance committee, which we did. I gave you that courtesy. I told you every commissioner was being called to just see how they felt about it, see what was going on with it, and to tell you what was going on. I don't appreciate the misinformation that has spanned out and that the misunderstanding for what tonight really is about has been missed.
Okay. Yeah, just, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move the question. Okay, question's been called for. You need, everybody, understand what you're voting for. So if you vote yes on this matter when your name's called for, it would be to send this to the legislator for consideration. If you vote no, it would be to not request this to the legislator. So everybody understand it? And this is strictly to give the option back to the county to adopt that. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay. When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyette?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson?
No.
Commissioner Farrar?
No.
Commissioner Hooker?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? Nine ayes, nine noes.
Therefore, the motion fails. All right. Next item on the agenda is, under rules and legislative, nothing to report. Law enforcement, nothing to report. Court House and property was nothing to report. Under financial management committee, it was put before the commission, should have been in your packet for the BCMS write-offs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is surplus of Board of Education property.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Got that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? County surplus property.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. County surplus property.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is, this is for your information, this was something the commission had voted on prior to, this is regarding to the TACAN, which is the emergency radio system, but that's in your packet for you to see. Next under other business, a three-year evidence-based program, it's called a BEP grant, and this was placed on the agenda by Commissioner Linda Yaki and Scott Johnson because it came in late through finance. It's something that needs to be acted on. It's through the sheriff's office. They do have someone present if you have particular questions regarding it. We need a motion of second first.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a motion of second. Vote for discussion. Commissioner Hooker?
Yeah, just as a question, just because, just to review, is there any financial responsibilities for the county in this, or is this a 100% grant?
Are you all okay if Robert speaks? Okay, Robert, if you'll come to them.
This is a non-matching grant. So the county has no match in it.
Any other questions regarding this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is quarterly reports.
If nobody's opposed, it's up to y'all. Do you want to hear them this month, or do you want to defer them to the next quarter?
Is there a second to defer them to the next quarter?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we've got a motion of second to defer the quarterly reports to next quarter. I believe most of the reports are actually in your packet. There's certainly several of them are here tonight. So is everybody accepting of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, do that. Next quarter. The motion was for next quarter. All right.
But we'll have the full year.
Right, correct, correct. All right. And then up next is announcements. I've got the youth leadership Bedford. We've put some information out to you guys before, but they've got this benefit for hope, which is sort of interesting that they had this vision, and the governor's kind of tracking on this same thing about the importance of mental health and making sure these children have what they need. So if you can support that in any way, even just telling others, they would appreciate that. We would, too. I believe Commissioner Sanders has a comment.
For those of y'all that weren't in attendance tonight, we did a juvenile detention study session right before this meeting, and we're going to have a follow-up with this, like a question and answer session. So I would highly encourage all commissioners to come to that. It'll be before the next commission meeting, May the 9th at 6:00 p.m.
Is that here, Julie?
Okay. Is there any other announcements? Anybody got any? Commissioner Hooker?
Yeah, sorry, I was going to do this under, when the director of schools came up, but I would like to really commend Dr. Garrett. Over the last two weeks, I've spent a lot of time with her to discuss some of these school safety issues. I was also present in her office when she had an active threat going on in the county. She absolutely handled that appropriately and was a great communicator throughout the county in handling that. So I just want to commend her with all the safety issues that's going on around the country. She's definitely the person we need in that seat, and she's doing a wonderful job.
I agree with that. Thank you. Commissioner Vic?
Yeah, two quick announcements. One, I think last month we told you that we had applied for a broadband acceleration program. We were in competition with all 95 counties in every state. We submitted our proposal, and Commissioner Boutwell and I were involved with this, and we were accepted. We will begin this intensive program at no cost to us for 14 weeks, beginning the end of April, that will allow us to develop a broadband initiative to be prepared for the second round of grants that come through. Number two, Dr. Garrett and I have been working with a group that provides shoes and footwear to schools. We needed to find a sponsor. I spoke with Jeremy Carpenter about that. The group is called Samaritan's Feet. It's a nationwide group. And so Dr. Garrett and I have been working with it. We spoke to Jeremy Carpenter at Tennessee Downs and told him we needed a sponsor. He was fortunate enough to find for us the Bo Decker Foundation, who will be sponsoring shoes. We will be at South Side Elementary, Dr. Garrett, I believe, on May the 17th at 8:00, where we will give every single student at South Side Elementary a new pair of sneakers, a new pair of socks, and a backpack provided by Coke. It is a huge get for us here, and it's the foundation, Bo Decker Foundation is paying for it. So what I would like to ask the commission, and I'll remind them again next month, we need volunteers to put shoes on these kids' feet. So if you will schedule 8:00, May 17th, to spend an hour or so and help us, it'll be a real, it's real monumental for us, and it'll help the kids and do a great thing. So we're very proud of the Bo Decker Foundation for what they've done.
Okay. Thank you for that. And since Dr. Garrett's not actually giving a report tonight, we do need to make an announcement. I know she's working with the sheriff's office, my administration, and the finance to have a stopgap measure. So if you want to just tell them what you've got going there.
Yes, sir. First of all, I feel it necessary, because I know I have parents that send their kids that are in this audience, I have teachers. So what I heard all of you say today is that you are committed to making sure school safety is a priority, and I do appreciate that. And I do know that these parents appreciate that. And what I would love to hear, and what I think I heard tonight, was that you guys are committed to making sure our school safety is a priority. So that is the thing that will let our parents sleep at night, that let the spouses of these teachers and principals be able to go to work and know that they're safe. So with that said, I look forward to us coming together because I know all of us are committed to that, and we're smart enough to figure out a way to make it happen. So I appreciate what I heard with that tonight. With that being said, this week, with the help of the mayor, Shelbyville Police Department, and Bedford County Sheriff's Office, we are, starting on Thursday, we'll have officers in every school. Because I do agree that teacher salary, principal salary, classified salary is important, but they want to know they can go to school and be safe. And just to make sure that we understand, that's just a drop in the bucket. We still have to make sure that we have locks on doors where our staff is not having to go into the hallway that may be dangerous and lock the door from the outside. We want to make sure that you can't shoot windows out of the front door and have protective glass. We are not in the same generation and school system that we were years ago. Do we want to be here? Absolutely not. But we are here, so we have to figure out a way to deal with it. So I ask that we put our heads together. I think that we can do this and figure out how to make it happen. I'm committed to it. If we need to take it out of our budget, we will do it. But just know that we will have fewer teachers. So we would appreciate any help and collaboration with the county to make that happen, but we feel it's important. But know, I want parents to know, teachers to know, principals know that Thursday, with the help of all these agencies, we're making it happen through the rest of the year. And I look forward to seeing what the governor rolls out and seeing what you guys can help us with in order to put our budget together to make sure that schools are safe, teachers are safe, and parents can send their kids to school and come home safe. And I lose sleep at night thinking about that. That's my number one priority. Yes, I want them to read and write, but I want the teachers to go home to their families and kids. I want students to go home to their families. But I think we can do that together, and I look forward to us picking apart that budget and being able to do that.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right. You want a motion to-